We're good to go.
We're good to go. Okay, I would like to call to order the Monday, May 18th, meeting of the Monona City Council. Please call to.
Alder Schilling?
Here.
Alder Wood?
Here.
Alder Coore?
Here.
Alder Thomas?
Here.
Alder Groupie?
Molly, you're on mute.
Alder Groupie?
Here.
Alder Moore?
Here.
Mayor O'Connor?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
Into the Republic for which it stands. Invisible with liberty and justice.
All right, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the May 4th meeting?
I want approval.
Second.
Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, minutes are approved. There are no appearances, there is no public hearing. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No.
What?
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, consent agenda is approved. Moving on to council action items, there is no unfinished business. We have several items under new business, the first four of which are start for immediate action. Item 2A, consideration of resolution 20-5-2410, authorizing the issuance and sale of 2.9 million in water system and sewer system revenue bonds, series 2020B, of the city of Monona, Dane County, Wisconsin, and providing for the payment of the bonds and other details with respect to the bonds, put forth by the finance director.
No questions, take this item out of order.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes, is there a motion to approve this?
I'll second.
Okay, Mark, were you going to talk first and then Jeff?
Yeah, this is our, uh, following for the revenue bonds, just for the utility. Utility work in water and sewer, there's two things part of this. There's the capital budget stuff that is part of this, and also refinancing. Jeff Bongi's on the line. Last meeting we had the authorization for Jeff Bongi to start negotiating with bondholders, and now he's back in this meeting with the business office. Jeff?
Thank you very much, I appreciate everyone, good evening. Had a wonderful sale today, I think you can see that from the sales results. Asked Joan JF not only the sales results, but another comparable sheet showing the two other issues that came recently, uh, Seola, Wisconsin, and Water, Wisconsin. But on the front page of the sales results, where we condensed everything, I think into, in the highlights, you will see that we initially started out with 2.9 million, but with premiums, et cetera, we were able to drop the power amount to $2,890,000. We went out of, obviously after our rating, we received an A-plus rating, which is our existing rating on.
My phone.
With some numbers, we looked at a double A rating by buying a Build America Mutual Insurance, um, policy. They gave us an incredible quote of basically 25 basis points, which amounted to slightly over $8,000. In running the calculations of the two cash flows, one cash flow being an A-plus, the other being a double A, we had estimated that there would be at least an eighty-some-thousand-dollar savings differential by going with the insurance policy. This is very typical of revenue bonds throughout the country, but, uh, as Alder Wood pointed out during finance, quick to note that the premiums we got were incredible in terms of how aggressive they were, pretty cheap, actually. We're sure that we have at least a 70,000 net present value savings after paying, uh, the insurance premium. If you take a look at our issue, remember, it's enterprise, it's a pledge of limited revenues, net revenues of an operation of the system. It differs from our normal general obligation ad valorem property tax pledge, which according to Wisconsin statutes, says that we are allowed to levy a tax without limit, that's always an advantage in terms of marketing debt and credit. As you know, you have an incredibly fine double A rating and, uh, on our general obligation debt, so I think it parlayed somewhat into, obviously, our operation of our utility. But take a look at the yields, when you look at our 2021 yields, we're at 0.73 percent. Goes to 0.84, then 0.96, and you can see as it goes out in time, the last two yields in 33 and 34 are 2.03 percent. Particularly proud of how we compared to a Fond du Lac County, Wisconsin issue that sold last week. It's a general obligation issue, um, which normally you're going to see at least, if the same municipality issues, general obligation versus revenue debt, you should see at least 10 basis points to 15 basis points difference in every maturity. That would mean if Fond du Lac County were able to issue revenue bond, that 92 would be 102, the 1 would be 110, follow me? And the 142 in 27 would be about 152. If you compare our rates, I mean, timing is one thing, but we're looking at revenue bonds versus GOs, outstanding in terms of the high credit, uh, acceptance. Part of that was using the insurance, because there are a lot of buyers in our country who won't even look at anything under a double A, so it allowed us to compete, uh, in a whole new marketplace. Bought us a lot, really. We ended up with a slight premium of just under $13,000 and a true interest cost of a 2.190 percent. You take a look at City of O'Connell, which came last week, that's a double A, to GO, it was non-van qualified, but still the differentials considerable when you look at what they sold for last week compared to what we sold for this week. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you have. All in all, I think we had, I know we had an excellent offering. Obviously, this is for your consideration. The, um, Mark can tell you that the amortization was structured primarily based on his direction, so hopefully we were able to provide exactly what he needed in terms of operating and maintaining that debt service for the utility. Certainly know we got some excellent rates here for you to consider.
Thanks so much, Jeff. Mark, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
No, I don't have anything else.
You're good. Any questions? Anybody? No?
I do.
Done?
Jeff, since we did get such a good deal with the insurance this time, is that something we should look at in the future? And can you do that, I guess we would need to do it on general obligation bonds, but is that something we should be looking at?
Well, you almost always do with revenue debt, because no municipality in the state of Wisconsin has a revenue stream or a, uh, in enterprise system that's rated the same as their general obligation. It's usually one or two grades below, which is typical, so we, we do like to consider, I never want to spend your money, let me back up, I never want to spend money that we don't get value for. And so with our GO being where it is, we'd never really improve. You know, your, your GO credits have, have sold on par with triple As. And, um, and so from that standpoint, I think it'd be a waste of our money, but you're right in terms of enhancing other revenue source, uh, revenue, uh, debt. One of the big ones we've got coming up this fall is our TID, taxable TID revenue bonds. And Mark and I had discussed this a little bit, um, last week when we were looking at the insurance for this issue. That would be opportune if we could work with an insurer to insure that particular issue, because we've got probably close to $18 million that we're going to convert to TID revenue bond. And, uh, so you'll see it again, and we'll have this discussion. And I think it'll be a great enhancement, uh, if we can secure, you know, a good pledge of, of an insurer on those particular bonds. But, good question, we do always look at it, uh, anything we can to enhance, uh, and we really did make a, a real analysis of the cost. Mark can share with you the fact that we ran these two cash flows, we then present-valued it back to be able to compare it to its today's dollar present value cost on insurance, and it probably saved us a net of at least 70 to 80,000 dollars net in terms of that premium. So it was definitely worth doing, no question.
Okay, thanks.
No, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, Joan, do you want to roll call for this?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Alder Mo-
Would you please?
Sorry? Go ahead, Mary.
Alder, roll.
Okay. Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Schilling?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Coore?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Groupie?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
Item- Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Jeff.
Item 2B, consideration of resolution 20-4-2406, approval to, approval to apply for Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources runoff management grant for Stonebridge Park, put forth by the Public Works Project Manager, this is also started for immediate action.
Move to suspend the rules and take this item out of order.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Brian, are you going to talk about this one?
Yes, and I'm now at the podium mic, so maybe you can hear me better at this microphone.
It sounds better.
Okay. So this is an application to allow staff to finalize our grant application with Wisconsin DNR for stormwater treatment. This is one of a couple, uh, grant applications that we are going to pursue in order to assist the city in getting stormwater projects funded to meet our requirements under our REIT 64 permit. The project that we're proposing at least now, conceptually, for Stonebridge Park would be an underground basin project. The final engineering, all those details need to be worked out, but this is a cost-share grant, so there is a city share and there would be a DNR share. The grant, uh, amount that we're requesting here through DNR would be $150,000. We will also be pursuing some other Dane County grants to help buy down the total cost of the underground storage facility, if we're successful in getting these grants. I think we've, we've talked as a council about this before, but this is kind of a, an iterative step process, there are a number of projects that we're going to need to do over the next 15 or so years to maintain our compliance with the DNR rules for stormwater management in the REIT 64 area, so this is kind of the first step. And if we are successful in getting the various grants that we're applying for, the cost of the city would be relatively low compared to the cost of the actual treatment system itself. So that's why it makes sense for us to pursue it now, and also hopefully loop in the money that we'd set aside in 2020 capital for the actual park facilities planning at Stonebridge, so that we're kind of doing both those processes at the same time, not ripping up the park one year and then coming back and ripping it up the second year later. So with that, I'll pause and take any questions you might have.
Questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Item 2C, consideration of resolution 20-5-2407, a resolution waiving interest and penalties on certain general book property tax installment payments until 2020, put forth by the finance director, also started for immediate action.
Move to suspend the rules and take this item out of order.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval. I'll second.
Mark?
Yes, um, this just came from last, last meeting, county exec, previously talked about this. What this is, is part of the, uh, air package, this is law, county passed a resolution allowing municipalities to, to tell the county that they don't, they should delay collecting the property taxes until October 1st, and have to charge interest and penalties. We have to approve, approve a resolution to that. What that does is delay a little bit in cash flow, usually gets settled in August 20th, now the full amount will come September 20th, so it's just a month delay, we have enough cash flow.
Any questions?
Kathy accidentally is sharing her screen, there we go.
Thank you. I was just like, whoa!
You got it, you got there.
Okay, yeah, and this is something that the legislature approved in their COVID-19 legislation a couple of weeks ago, and the, the county had to approve it, and then the local municipality had to approve the county doing it, so that's why we're doing this.
Our community needs to update.
Yeah. So any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, item 2D, consideration of resolution number 20-5-2409, suspending water disconnections during the coronavirus health emergency, put forth by the city administrator, also started for immediate approval.
Move to suspend the rules and take this out of order.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion to approve?
Move approval.
Your second?
Second.
All right, Brian, are you going to talk about this, or Mark?
I can talk about this, Brian. What this is, is a response to the last meeting. Last meeting we talked about disconnections and interest and penalties. One of the recommendations of the last meeting was to waive disconnections during this time period for this year, is not paid to go on to the tax rule, it's part of our ordinance, so this is a resolution to suspend that for this year.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Next item, um, item 2E, consideration of resolution 20-5-2408, approving the plan commission recommendation for the Ahara Commons Development Phase 2 PIP, uh, put forth by the city planner, uh, Mr. Plomman is going to talk about this. We were sent the plan, the PIP plan itself and the staff report in separate emails, and hopefully everyone's received. So Doug?
Thank you, good evening, everyone. So this is the, uh, the final phase of the Ahara Commons development. In total, it contains 145 market rate apartment units, uh, with, with 283 covered parking stalls. There's no retail component to this development. The plan commission had a pre-hearing conference in late January, um, so to sort of discuss preliminary plans. Feedback was very positive, there's a lot of discussion about parking, um, some about the bridge road, uh, face of the building as well, but in general, it was received very well. This was, was heard last Monday at the May 11th meeting, the, the final submittal. I'd say the book, the discussion kind of focused on three main pieces, uh, the engineering, review and, and items, uh, of which the city has engaged Strand Associates again, uh, who reviewed the first two pieces, or the first two developments. So they'll be working to, um, review the documents and really sort of working closely with the applicant's engineer on that. Another was the, the parking ramp, uh, locations, which are still to be finalized, specifically the public parking ramp. Uh, there's actually going to be no internal circulation between the two levels of parking, and there are going to be access from different points. So finally, the, the public parking, um, ramp is still up for discussion, and that's why Strand will come in, and there's a lot of gray change challenges there, um, as well as just trying to get the optimal location, um, obviously to make it most accessible for, for the public. And I think the final point of discussion was really the bridge road frontage, um, applicant had made some changes based upon commission feedback from January. Uh, they added five units along, effectively along the street level, uh, which was much more in keeping with how the general development plan, the sort of overarching master plan for this, had envisioned it. So they're, they're not true walk-up units, as had been put in the, the plan, uh, walkout balconies, um, and sort of engage the, the street level a little bit more there. So that added five more units as well to, to the development, which negated some, some changes elsewhere, so it keeps it at 145. So the plan commission approved the zoning permit with a total of 22 conditions, um, most of which allow for staff or administrative approval, um, in conjunction with, uh, the city's engineer. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Sorry, I was muted. Any questions, anyone? No, we will be discussing the amendment to the development agreement regarding this in closed session tonight, but if you have anything else? Okay, um, hearing none, then I guess we will move on to the next item. 2F, discussion and update on staffing, budgetary and city operations contingency plans for COVID-19, uh, which put forth by the city administrator.
Thank you, uh, there's not a, a ton of new information as it relates to city hall and city operations. Uh, we, we did however get notice today that Dane County has just put out their own separate, uh, kind of bounce-back plan, if you will, Forward Dane is what it's called. In terms of what it means for us, there's not a ton of new changes, other than we are able to open up tennis courts with some limitations and a few other smaller items, but the main restrictions that had been in place previously are still going to be in place until at least the 26th of this month, and then we will see if there's additional guidance that comes out from the county about what is available to be open after the 26th. I've asked Jake Anderson to be with us here tonight just to give a, a little brief update on what he's hearing as it relates to the, the park and recs world. I know that the swimming pool is an object of much concern and discussion, uh, locally here in Monona, but also across the county and across the state, in terms of what communities are doing, making long-term decisions for the summer. So I'll have Jake weigh in on that here in just a moment. But I will say that we are looking at the Dane County plan, and we are in the process of also putting together our own separate Monona plan as it relates to our public facilities, so we will have more information to provide the council on June 1st, uh, as we've had a chance to, to wade through the county's plan and likely get some additional updates from Dane County Emergency Management over the next two weeks. So that's kind of an ongoing moving target, that we'll have more information for you in about two weeks. In addition, at our June 1st meeting, we will also have some updates on kind of the longer-term staffing plan, uh, based upon the information that we hear from the county in terms of what, what services can be opened versus what services have to remain closed. So those two items are, are still, uh, under discussion, and we'll have more information for you, uh, in the coming weeks. So with that, I'll pause, uh, maybe turn things over to Jake to go, provide some comments on the park and rec world.
Jake, you want to?
Yep, thanks, Brian. Yeah, so the news broke today, a little after 4:00 PM about the Forward Dane program, some interesting tidbits in there. We do have a, a countywide, um, Q and A meeting with someone from Public Health on Thursday at 10:00 AM, so I don't want to say too lot, too much about my interpretation right now of what the, that phased-in approach to some of the programming and elements looks like until I get clarification, but I do think there's going to be a path for us to offer our, uh, summer camp program this summer, which is good news. There would be potentially a path for the pool, but that will be a council decision based on, um, what phase we're in in the Dane County plan, uh, and when that's, based on occupancy rates, uh, so I, I would think we'll have a pretty, a, a much better idea and options for our June 1st meeting. Give me a little bit of time to go through the, the varying restrictions that will be in place, and also, um, you know, as soon as that we could open some facilities. So, uh, currently with the, the safer home order and the Dane County plan, we already go open restrooms, however, we've had some challenges with securing PPE, uh, which we're just starting this week to start to see the availability of some of that start to, um, open up a little bit. So the goal would be potentially by Memorial Day to have maybe a shelter or two open, uh, because of some of the, the challenges of getting PPE and then just the frequency of cleaning and available staff that we have. So we're continuing to do programming virtually, um, and starting to, to branch out a little bit. We got some positive news this past weekend with our Monona Zoo, Lawn Zoo event, which again goes to show why Monona is one of the greatest places to live, work and play, because of the people that live here and the way that they participate in activities, and Monona came out strong, and it was really cool. So more things like that, uh, we are bringing on a few of our, our park seasonals for just maintenance of, you know, mowing operations, trash collection, um, and we're starting to work on some of our turf restoration, um, from flood-prone areas in the different parks. So, uh, while this event came out today, I'll have a much better idea towards the end of the weekend what it typically means, but I can say tennis courts will be open tomorrow, definitely a huska, so if you like to play tennis and the courts are dry now, feel free to play some tennis.
I, I would just add, just from my reading of the, um, the plan and, and the announcement they made today, it did sound like they were hoping to start moving a little more quickly than they had been, was the feeling I got, so. Anybody have any questions for Jake? Nope, for Brian? Jake is saying sayonara. Okay, if nobody else has anything for them, we'll have, we should have a lot more information, I think, at the next, the next meeting, I think we'll have a much better idea of where things are going, but I think Jake would agree that we definitely are not opening the pool on June 1st, so we'll make a decision about it, isn't that correct, Jake?
Yep, that's correct.
Allow to open it.
Due to the, today is literally the first day that we've had any guidance as far as what potential restrictions or opening look like for the outdoor pool. So to that end, we have delayed what our normal preseason operation procedures would be, which would include cleaning the pool basin, um, getting the locker rooms, plumbing up and ready to go, and starting to fill the pool because of the associated cost with that, and if it was not going to be an option for us to open it all this year, we would not want to incur those costs. So, uh, from the moment that we get the approval to have some sort of a season, uh, it's going to be three weeks, potentially up to four weeks to kind of get everything ready. So the goal is to be to provide you guys with the best possible information regarding, um, operational costs, expected revenue by our June 1st meeting. If we get the go-ahead at that point, I safely assume that we can be ready by July 1st for opening the pool.
Any other questions?
I have a question for Dave.
If you're not speaking, you want to put your phone on mute, we're getting a lot of weird feedback, thank you.
What, what size groups can, can you gather in the park, for example? I'm thinking of the concerts.
Yeah, Kathy, good question. I think concerts are going to be out of the question until we get to Phase 3. The Dane County plan, I believe Phase 1 is gatherings of 10 for, um, festivals, Phase 2, I believe, is 50, Phase 3 is 100, but it might be Phase 2 is 100, Phase 3 is 250. I think, might be Phase 2 is 100, Phase 3 is 250.
Well, we have a plan, and Molly and I will talk about that later when we do our reports.
Sounds great.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you, Jake. I think the next item involves moving into closed session, convene in closed session under Wisconsin statute, section 19.85, print 1, print E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This involves the Ahara Commons Phase 3, Third Amendment to Development Agreement, and the acquisition of Schmuter Road property. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
I'll second.
The clerk, please call the roll.
Alder Groupie?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Schilling?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Coore?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Okay, we will be going into closed session, which means we will be leaving this meeting, and, uh, you should have all received the link to the, we'll see you there in a minute or two.
Now, Brian, can you re-invite me just in case I can't find it? Thank you.
Okay, we're good to go.
Sitting on the floor the entire meeting.
We're good to go.
And they're like, why am I not in your lap?
It's a reward.
We're back in open session.
Okay, we're ready, we're, we're on?
Yep.
Okay, um, so we have one more item, consideration and possible action on items discussed in closed session, so we, we will need a motion on that, the last item.
Have to suspend the rules on that one?
Yes, we should do that.
Move to suspend, suspend the rules and take this item out of order.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, now is there a motion about the item?
Okay, so I'm hoping we purchase whatever the address is on the Schluter Road.
5207 Schluter.
5207 Schluter Road in the amount of 237?
29.
29?
Mm-hmm.
Second.
Is that sufficient, Brian?
It's a roll call, ma'am.
Okay, yep. Any further discussion? Okay, Hearing Nunman, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Thomas.
Aye.
Alder Groupie.
Aye.
Alder Moore.
Aye.
Alder Schilling.
Aye.
Alder Wood.
Aye.
Alder Coeur.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We are now homeowners. Okay, next item is reports of committees, commissions, et cetera. So we will start with Alder Moore.
I have one thing to report, which is that the Sustainability Committee met last week, and we were able to reach a combination with Renew Wisconsin, who's been the provider of Matty Sun Solar Program that this is the second, we're in the second year of, and they actually have already gotten some interest from Monona residents, but we will no longer be paying them for that service, which is a savings in our budget. They are, they've basically taken it countywide, and because they can't do in-person sessions as they've done previously, we felt like it would be a little tone deaf to be ginning up a lot around solar energy right now anyway, and so they're doing a lot more advertising. They have a much bigger marketing budget, and we expect the program to be stronger than it's been in previous years for our residents, but we will not be having to pay for that service.
That's great news. Alder Thomas.
So two things. There's a public safety, a Zoom, public safety meeting on the 27th of this month. And secondly, the concerts, which Molly and I are both involved with in the park, while we're not going to hold them in the park, we are going to have them, and we're going to have it broadcast over WVMO, and Molly has done publicity. So do you want to add something, Molly, about the concerts?
I haven't done any publicity for it yet, but there will be an article in the Senior Center Newsletter, and then presumably that can be adapted to an announcement on, a PSA on WVMO.
And who's playing and what's the date?
There are four concerts. Boy, you got me off guard a little bit here.
Yeah, it's the 22nd, though, right?
Yep, the first one is June 22nd.
So listen to, so listen to, it'll be on.
Yep, I'm sorry, yep.
But we want to keep it as normal as we can for the seniors, so.
Right.
That's a great idea.
Do you think there would be an opportunity to do one of those, like FaceTime watch parties for it as well, for the band? Those have been really popular.
I think that, you know, we haven't fully explored options. I think it's possible, too, that Monona Community Media could stream it, depending on where it is, on YouTube, on the YouTube channel as well. I do have the dates and the concerts of people.
Okay.
So on Monday, June 22nd, it's the JV3s. They're newcomers this year. Monday, July 13th, Mark Croft Band. Tuesday, July 28th, Carl David and Friends. And then Tuesday, August 4th, is Linda and the Zeros. And August 4th is National Night Out, so TBD about whether, you know, that's going to be happening in a limited or any capacity, but that's what the lineup is. And we have created a poster that I think will have to be modified, obviously, but hopefully that will be disseminated in some way to via social and our website.
I mean, I think it would be wonderful if everybody could sit in their driveway and play music, and you could go up and down the street. Whether or not stuff like that is doable, we're not sure, but we did not want to cancel them, and we have sponsors, and so it'll go, the show will go on and just be different.
That's a great idea. And who knows, maybe, you know, as you get into July, they might have lightened up, eased up on the restrictions, that maybe you could have one or two of them in person.
And/or August, and we've talked about that. I mean, you could put signs up in the park and seat them, you know, a fair distance apart and honor that, but we're just happy to get this one going through the Monona media, so.
No, it's a great solution. Is that everything you had, Kathy?
That's all I have.
Molly, do you want to give anything else?
No report beyond that. We'll keep it posted about the concerts.
Okay, Jennifer? You're on mute.
Sorry. I have one thing for the library. We are opening up returns, I believe, starting Wednesday during specific hours, and of course I don't remember the hours off the top of my head.
I think it's 12 to 6, I think.
Thank you. And so it's a trial run. We're going to give that a shot. People are concerned about the process. We're intending to accept the items, and then they're going to be essentially quarantined within the library for several days before they're allowed to go back out through the drive-through pickup.
Do you have any idea if they're thinking about restarting delivery? It kind of sounded like maybe they were doing a little bit of that, or?
I'm sorry, restarting delivery?
The South Central Delivery Service?
It sounded like they were holding off for quite a while, yes. So we've got our library board meeting tomorrow night. We make it an update from Ryan. But our last meeting, it was, it was a ways away yet.
Okay. Alder Schilling?
Yeah, Landmarks. Doug Plowman will be preparing an RFP for the top of the pagoda repairs, so we can just get an estimate to see what, what those costs might look like and if that's a possibility. And then Community Media, Will Nimmo just emailed everybody that WVMO has been nominated as a finalist for Station of the Year again, so that's great. That's by the Wisconsin Broadcasters Association. It'll be a virtual awards ceremony, and it'll start tomorrow, Tuesday, May 19th, at 10:00 AM. We have, WVMO has 22 entries in the finals there. Yeah, it's like.
Great. Thank you. Alder Wood?
Let's see. Oh, one comment on the concerts. Really glad to hear about, you know, that we're going forward with those, and hopefully, you know, maybe we'll see later in the summer, we can actually have them live. But I'm sure the bands also appreciate the opportunity. License Review met last Tuesday. We actually met in person. We did it at the, from the city council chambers at the lower level of the library, and there's only five members on the committee, so we were able to space out, you know, up where the council would normally sit, where we'd usually have like eight people. So we were able to spread out. We had three staff members there who were at separate tables facing us, and then as it turned out, nobody made an appearance at the meeting. So it was, it went well, it was safe, and it was great to actually see people in person. So, you know, whet your appetite for more interaction. Parks Board, I guess the main thing was we discussed Stonebridge Park Project and still going forward with both the Stormwater Project and also the Largere Park Project, and really glad to hear that Landmarks is moving forward with that pagoda. That's just been a tough one to get, to get that project going. I think there's been two or three of us who chaired that committee while we've been working on that, so it'd be great to see that happen.
It'll be interesting. It's a tricky, the tricky shape, but we have the full scan, and so, yeah, it'll be interesting to see how those come in.
Yeah, great.
And I think getting a decent scan has been a big problem, so.
Not like it, not like that was the hurdle.
Sounds like we've got that taken care of. So hopefully we get a bid that isn't the top.
Hopefully.
Okay, City Attorney Cole, do you have any news to share?
Nope, nothing to report. I'll talk to the owners tomorrow of 5207 and get a walkthrough going for there, and we should expect to close sometime June 2nd.
Great, great. Thanks for your work on that. And City Administrator Gatto?
Just two quick items. First, Bridge Road, we just can't get, catch a break with weather. We were poised, poised to start doing paving early part of this week. We've had to delay that a little bit. So tomorrow is going to be the dry out day. We're hoping if we get no more rain, pavement will dry out tomorrow. The goal is then Wednesday to come in, do the binder course. Thursday, do the asphalt paving. Friday, do the striping. So hopefully, early part of next week, we can have it drivable for folks. There'll be some punch list items that we'll have to take care of in the coming days after that, but fingers crossed if weather holds, we should have pavement down by the end of this week. So if that changes, I'll let the council know, but just know that we're trying to drag this thing to the finish line as quick as we can. And then just, I'll kind of do my bi-weekly update on the census. Our kind of self-reporting on that, we are now at 77.7%, which is good. It'd be great for us to get even higher. We're comparable with all of our adjacent communities right now, so that's good. So if you know anyone who has not yet filled out their census form, please ask them to do that. They can find more information out on the city's website. We've done a couple PSAs. I'll do a couple more here as we do our push. I think the deadline for all the communities is to get their petition in by August 15th, so we'll do kind of one last push here in the next couple of weeks to let people know to get us as close as possible to 100%.
That'd be great. And Joan and Will, I'm sorry, since I can't see you, I didn't think to ask you, but do either of you have any news to report?
No report, ma'am.
Is Will still there?
Will has nothing to report, he said.
Okay. I just had a couple things. I wanted to comment on the drive-through zoo. It was great. Little kids next door had theirs out. I think they were out there at 7:00 in the morning getting the whole thing set up. It was very exciting. This is National EMS Week this week. Last week was National Police Week, so again, we thank especially this year all of our first responders and public safety people. The Alliance Energy Center, there's a testing site there for COVID-19, which most of you probably heard about. They are looking for people to come in now, and you, I think there's been some confusion. People thought they had to either have an order from their doctor or be recommended. They would like to test as many people as possible, because part of the metrics involved in being able to reopen is that our percentage of positive tests is going down. So it's, from what I understand, it's very easy to do. They're open from 8:00 to 5:00, I think, every day. I think they're open on the weekends, too. The National Guard is there, and they just announced today on a conference call I was on that they're going to be open from 8:00 to 8:00 on Tuesdays and Thursdays to make it a little easier for people who are working. So please, if you want to get checked, and especially if you think you have any symptoms, please go, it's free. No documentation is required. They'll take some, you know, your number or something, so they can let you know the results, but. And if you do not have, if you have a problem getting transportation, and this is kind of more for our viewers than anyone else, but if you hit, if you need a way to get there, if you call 608-243-0420, they can arrange transportation for you. It may take a day or two, but they said they'd be happy to make those arrangements, so. I think that's everything else. Again, congratulations to WVMO once again, tons of nominations, which is wonderful. The only other thing is appointments. There are four appointments to different committees. Is there a motion to?
I was just going to comment before we do that on, you mentioned the testing. UW Health and I think probably maybe other providers are also now doing antibody tests. If you think that you may have been exposed or may have had the coronavirus, but weren't sick enough that it wasn't, you didn't get tested. I am actually having one of those tests tomorrow, because I had a move out in mid-February that seems now in hindsight suspiciously like it may have been the COVID, but that's, I think, another metric they're going to be looking at, too, is how many people test positive antibodies, so.
Definitely.
Is there a fee for that, Doug?
I think there is. I know, well, yeah, the health insurance should cover it, so.
Okay, everybody, nothing else? Okay, is there a motion to approve the appointments?
I'll move approval.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Appointments are approved. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Sorry, can I, can I just check one other thing? Have we shared information about the, about the testing and the rides with the chamber so they could send it up to their members?
No, but I could do that. I just heard about some of it today, so I'll send them an email. And I've been sharing information quite a bit, so.
Yep, yep. Great. Okay, that's out, sorry.
All right, is there a motion?
I have one last question, I'm so sorry. I was just curious about Monona Transit, and do we, is it, it's running, it's running limited schedule?
It's running its basic schedule, I think, isn't it, Brian?
Its basic schedule.
Yeah, it's been running the same schedule, yeah.
Okay, are there riders?
There's some riders on the express. I think we're getting a fair amount on the Lyft, though, aren't we?
I think I heard Lyft was busy, okay.
Yeah. So I think just the nature of our funding and everything, we pretty much have to keep them both running, so. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned, and have a nice Memorial Day weekends, even though we're not being the parade, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.